Get started. I'd like to call to order the Lafayette Township Board of Trustees and Fire District Meeting, June 5th at 7:00 PM. The notice requirements of Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code and implementing rules adopted by the Board pursuant thereto were complied with for this meeting. Roll call.
O'Neal here.
O'Callaghan here.
Fullerton here. We can all stand for the pledge.
(inaudible).
I'd like to welcome Commissioner Harrison to our meeting. He's going to be speaking on a topic under New Business. He has to be put on the agenda, so we'll listen to what he's got to say under New Business. Let's try to approve minutes, May 1st. You guys had time to read them? Questions? Comments?
I have no questions, no comments.
No questions.
Motion to approve?
I've moved to approve the meeting minutes for regular meeting of Monday, May 1st, 2023, as well as a special meeting of Thursday, May 18th, 2023, at 1:30.
I'll second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. All right. Before we do our consent agenda, thank you, I want to bring up, next month's meeting is July 3rd. Can we just have a short discussion? You guys want to leave it on the 3rd? Or you want to move it to the 10th? Call it a special meeting, just to replace the regular meeting?
Either way is fine with me.
You know, I think moving it to the 10th would be better, folks going out of town for long weekends and such. Bill, we do that, we could still make a special meeting, do all the normal things we do in a regular meeting, right?
That's what they get. A special meeting for the purposes of replacing the July 3rd.
Okay.
And taking care of the regular business.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to do.
All right. You want to...
I'd make a motion that we cancel the regular July 3rd meeting. I'd make a motion, we cancel the July 3rd meeting for 2023 and move it to July 10th, same time, same location. Purpose of the meeting would be to replace the meeting that we're canceling on the 3rd.
I'll second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. All right, so we'll put a... We'll put a meeting notice out in the paper and where we post it as a special to cover for the 3rd. Okay, good. All right, consent agenda, everyone had time to read everybody's reports?
Yes.
Yes.
Any questions? Comments?
I didn't have any, no.
All right.
Not from me.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second the motion.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. All right. Fiscal. Laura, is there anything that didn't hit your report you want to talk about?
No, sir.
You good to go?
Good to go.
All right. Service, Rick is not here tonight. I did read his report, but I do need to add something that he didn't have on his report. The admin building parking lot, service garage parking lot, is being sealed tomorrow and Wednesday, so the guys are going to put up caution tape, foot traffic only, so we just have to park in the way up front or over in the stone area, just for those two days. So, but they're supposed to put signs up for visitors to pull over.
So, just the parking lot, not the driveway approach where service comes in and all?
Just basically the parking lot.
Okay.
Yep, that was the only thing that came up last minute, so, because he did get all the cracked ceiling all done, so. All right. Fire chief is not here. Captain?
Yep. He's back there. Good evening, everybody. So, for the month of May, we responded in total to 66 calls for service. We had 49 of those in Lafayette Township. We have four in Westfield, six in Chippewa, one in Seville, and then we had two in York, two in Gorda Glen, and two in Chatham as well. Those were all based off our mutual aid. Year-to-date, we're at 297 calls. That was as the month, as the end of May, actually, I should say. May's turnout time, again, turnout time is the time that laps, so time we're dispatched to the time we go en route, 2 minutes and 9 seconds. Travel time, time we go en route to time on scene, 5 minutes and 19 seconds. May training, we went to Ballish Road, so there's a gentleman on Ballish Road that was doing some demo work. He afforded us the opportunity to go in there, do some event enter search training, so we took advantage of that, invited some surrounding departments, it was good training. And then we had med control as well, so Cleveland Clinic Medina Hospital came out and did a training for us on the 24th. Miscellaneous updates, we talked, we procured a new TARP for our boat, so our boat, we're actually looking to put in Chippewa Lake. We've got some dock space available down there, it's just going to make it a little easier for us if we need to get to that boat quickly, we'll be able to do that. Wanted to send a huge thank you to Lafayette Fire Township Firefighters Association. We were in need of a new battery charger, and they purchased one for us that was a cost of $305. Preventative maintenance has been done and completed on all of our apparatus, that's with the exception of Squad 1071, which will be going out this month for that. May 21st through the 27th was National EMS Week, just a week to honor and recognize our EMS personnel for the service that they do. Again, Medina Hospital came out, they provided lunch for us, so we thank them for that. Along those same lines, we actually have a new medical director as well, that was assigned by Medina Hospital. Dr. Matt Minadi will be starting with us shortly, so we welcome him onboard. Hydrant testing is completed for the month of, or for the 2023 season, so we're done with that. We purchased a new positive pressure fan, that was approved last meeting, that's been placed in the service on Engine 2, so we thank you for that. Shout out to Rick for helping get our lot scheduled to get paved, that'll be next week, I'm told. And 4th of July parade is going to be on the 4th of July, as it is every year, theme is Rock and Roll 4th, so we're looking forward to that. And then, just want to thank the Chippewa Lake Lions Club for inviting us to their golf cart parade that we do every year for them, so we're taking part in that event, so thank you to them. That's all.
Mike, two things. Just from paperwork side, was there anything that you told us about that was not containing your monthly report?
Um, no.
I think everything was, I just, I'm not positive. Okay. Okay. Secondly, the turnout times, would you be able to, I mean, you report them every month, which is great, could you provide those like a running graph, so you can see one month to the next, the next, kind of see as we're up or down, maybe we can see if there's trending going on?
Correct.
Find reasons for it?
Sure.
All right. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Hey, a quick question. The positive pressure that we bought, do you have a price tag on that?
I don't have it off the top of my head, no, I have to...
Because we're going to have to add that to the OTARMA renewal when we...
Yeah.
So, we just...
4,800.
Oh, 4,800. That's right, that's right, it was.
You said that you tested the fire items, every single one in Lafayette Township?
So, we're required to do 20% a year, so...
20%. So, we only test 20% of our fire items? We don't know the rest?
We flow all of them, we just don't record the pressures on every single one, but we flush all of them.
You do flush every single one, every year?
Yes.
So, they're all working?
Uh, no, they're not all working, there's some maintenance issues that we're working with the water department to fix. They're the ultimate ones that are responsible.
That's a good question, Tom.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. All right, police, Lieutenant Wagner's here to, sitting in for Lieutenant Markham.
Good evening, sir. I don't have anything additional.
Nothing additional to your report? Okay. Thank you. Zoning, Alice?
And, I would like to know if you could steal Police Chippewa Ward, please.
Sure. How are you talking?
Dragway 42, we call it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Nothing that's not on your, excuse me, on my report?
Okay.
Actually, real quick, while we're on zoning, want to add this in. On June 30th, Northeast Ohio Planning and Zoning is holding a workshop at Kent University, and I would like to make a motion for the township to cover the enrollment costs for those of us that want to attend. It would be seven folks from zoning, two trustees and law director, Bill Thorne, I think it's $70 per person?
Everybody was asked?
Yeah. Are you under zoning?
Oh.
Yeah. It was made available to members of zoning commission, BZAA, alternates.
Does that include reimbursement for mileage for the people that drive?
That's a good question. It's out of the township, so I would say yes.
Yeah, but it needs to be in the motion, I would think.
So, I would like to make a motion to include mileage costs and enrollment fees for those folks.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Marty, aye?
Aye.
On, same sign, all right. You got it, Chris. All right, correspondence is next. I did talk to resident Will, he's going to be talking in public participation about some other things, but I had met with him a couple times at his house. Corner of Ballish and 162, if you're heading east on 162 and you go south on Ballish, there's this catch basin that's probably this far too low, in my opinion. So, called ODOT, they don't want nothing to do with it, they're not going to change it. Marty reached out to Commissioner Hamley, and he thought he might be able to help us with, at a minimum, permission from ODOT, because it's their easement, and we can fix it. It wouldn't take our crew, but maybe a couple hours to fix it, but...
But we have to get their approval.
We have to get their approval, so, and we are working on that angle. Rick and I already went out there, we actually got the 6-inch riser that it needs, we'll use the same iron, catch basin iron, so, and then we'll just hot mix around it and make it nice and smooth. And did Commissioner Hamley say anything about timing?
No. I just, I talked to him at the EMA meeting here about a week and a half ago, and he said he would, from the people he still knew down when he was in the State House, he was making a couple calls. We'll put our other commissioner on that as well, and he can, he can kind of keep following up with that.
Shake some trees?
Absolutely, absolutely. Whatever you can do to help him.
Yeah, absolutely. Probably ask the right one, and I'll follow up. Do you have any correspondence?
I don't.
Type it's also going out on the 162, unless you pull straight out in the almost uncoming traffic, you're going to go into that, you can fall into a rut.
The scary one's the one that I said, but yeah, the east side is a little bit low too, but there's no catch basin there. When we hot mix this side, we can hot mix that at the same time. Chris, any correspondence?
Nope.
All right, new business. County Commissioner Harrison's here, and he wants to talk about the revised emergency management agreement.
Can we go up there?
Sure.
Yeah, thanks for having me, too, I appreciate it. I sent an email to the trustees and also to fiscal officer related to the EMA agreement. There has been a lot of dialogue back and forth, both within the commissioner's office and then some of the subdivisions as well, in the process of getting this updated, but really what it boils down to is, we currently have a 30-year-old document that through just the course of time and some other circumstances, has, the agency's kind of outgrown. Not really outgrown in the sense that it needs to change, but statutes changed that created it from what it was back in 1990, when it was first established. So, through kind of a review with the prosecutor's office, it was determined that, you know, if we were going to make some updates, we want to make sure first and foremost that the agreement complied with the statute. The statute has changed since 1990, as you would expect. So, in doing that, in updating those, the provisions of the agreement to create the amended agreement that I circulated late last week, I think it came from our office before that, but I, I'm referencing the email I sent late last week, an effort was made to preserve as much as possible the current makeup of the executive committee. What that means, I guess, to the township, or to the different townships in Medina County, is that there's, there's kind of this statutory seats that are required on the executive committee, and of those, two of those are dedicated to the township. That's how it's been. Mr. O'Callaghan's been one of those representatives, along with Brian Gushen from Green County, I started to say Green County, that wasn't it. And so, they've been the representatives of the township. I think, in addition, some of the other changes, which I think are going to cause the thing to operate better going forward, we've carved out a spot for the sheriff to be on the executive committee. There hadn't been a true law enforcement representative on there. Matt Hescock from the City of Wadsworth, their safety director, has been on there, so obviously, he certainly can wear that hat, but in terms of someone who's actually, the sheriff's going to kind of wear that hat, or at least it would be him or his appointee when this is created. So, we've circulated it to the subdivisions, the next step is for the subdivisions to take action to ratify it, and once it's ratified by a majority of the political subdivisions, it becomes the official document. From a financial standpoint, it doesn't change the local share contribution and calculation's going to remain the same as it's been, well, at least in the recent past. Maybe it's changed in the 30 years it's been in existence, but this agreement doesn't prescribe any changes to the financial contributions in the agreement. So, it's been circulated, there's been action taken by, I think at this point, I don't quote me, but about a half dozen subdivisions have acted upon it. We figure those are going to kind of come in semi-regularly as these meetings are had, and we're trying to get out to cover as many meetings as we can to let people know about it, answer any questions they have. So, in addition to the materials I had there, I wanted to just be here, see if you had any questions about it, if you had the chance to review it, or how I...
Were there any other communities that didn't participate in the county?
In the countywide emergency management agency? No, every subdivision is currently...
Because it reads, you don't have to, but you'd be on your own?
Yeah, and I had...
Because I had heard, I'm sorry, I heard Wadsworth was trying to do something like...
Yeah. It's a, it's an interesting dynamic created, I want to be very clear, created by statute, not by the commissioner's office, that says your options are to participate in the countywide agency if one exists, or to create your own. I don't think that's a terribly appealing proposition for most municipalities, would be to create their own. Even some of the larger municipalities where maybe theoretically they have resources to do that, when you're already in a county that's got a countywide agency, when you're already involved with mutual aid and these other kinds of services, it seems to make an awful lot of sense to be part of that. And that kind of hammer that comes from the statute is kind of hanging over the different communities. Our efforts in trying to, and kind of the reason why there was an original agreement and there's a revised agreement, has been to try and make sure we proceed delicately enough where nobody's going to feel like there's a gun to their head to make the decision. But we are to the point now where we think we've got the agreement in as good of a place as it can be, where it's balancing continuity of the organization along with the, you know, the need to get an updated, an updated agreement that's compliant. So, historically, there hasn't been anybody who's opted out. I guess the only way, the only way I can answer that question right now, as it relates to this document, is it remains to be seen. I think while there'll be some entities and organizations, subdivisions that are going to operate, that are going to approve this quicker than others, I'd like to think we've got an agreement that everybody's going to be on board with at the end of the day. And there were, as Marty can attest, you know, discussions and continued discussions within the committee. The committee doesn't strictly approve, you know, the final version of the agreement, but I felt pretty good about where the discussions, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Marty, but I felt pretty good about where the discussions, at least where they ended up, as it related to the things that were changed in that final version of the amendment.
Well, and especially from a township side, we were able to retain our same two seats on the EMA that we always had, but there's also the possibility of a third township seat. There's an executive board, and then there's a potential to extend the board to a larger size based on what the executive board wants. There's just a whole bunch of different stipulations through, but we could have up to three different townships, or three different township trustees representing on the EMA board, which we never were able to have before, it was maxed at two.
And as a technical matter, the 90 agreement didn't really prescribe that those two, those two seats that historically have been township seats were township seats. I think that was one of the changes you suggested at one point, was hey, while we're at it, let's clarify that those seats are the township seats, because there's these five seats that belong to what they call the chief executives of the political subdivisions. Three of them have gone, one to each of the large cities, and the other two have historically gone to the trustees. But there was nothing in the agreement that prescribed that. In the amended agreement now, it does prescribe, those two at a minimum are going to be there, and then some of the extra seats that are there, you're exactly right, one, or even theoretically more of those could go to the trustees, and those are generally picked by the trustees association.
Are there any changes I would make up on the board?
There are a few other changes to the agreement. I think, I hope that I sent you a marked copy of it that reflected those. They are, sometimes people like the marked up copies and sometimes people don't, so if that didn't get in there, I can make sure you get one. Some things that had more to do with kind of the responsibilities of the commissioner's office in terms of financial responsibilities, not changing them, but just clarifying, you know, some of the contributions that are made that aren't really direct contributions, but more indirect costs, there's some language in there related to that. There's some other language related to the operation, right now, the executive committee meets monthly, and one of the concerns with this new structure is that chief executive language might rearrange some of the municipal representatives on the committee, so we wanted to leave the door open, if the committee decides that it's problematic to meet with the full group, with mayors and kind of the official representatives on a monthly basis, as we've done in the past, that some of that could be delegated. There wasn't the ability to do that in the past, so it just, it just gives a little bit more flexibility, because basically, the statute says it must be this, and then from there, we've got to comply with our agreement. So, our agreement gives us a few more, a little bit more latitude, so.
Does anybody have a question? Go ahead, Joe.
I'll be the first to ask. What is the emergency management agency? I bet you that a lot of people don't know what that is.
I'm going to give, I'm going to give your trustee on the end there a little bit of credit too, because he told me that was going to be a question that would come up, so, yeah, it is a good question. It's the emergency management agency, so it's a countywide operation that basically marshals and combines the resources of the county and also exists to get grant funding and other resources collected to provide services in the event of, you know, in some kind of countywide or larger scale emergency. So, they would assist, they have the emergency response vehicle, if you've ever been at some of these bigger events, they'll bring that out, it's like a mobile command post, it can kind of operate as a home base. They do a lot with water rescue, certain tools and resources that maybe no individual community would need, they're able to secure grant funding for some of those things, or other funding for those things, and then they're, you know, between the staff and then the member communities, the planning goes into, you know, so a lot of training programs and things like that. Recently, I think last fall, there was a communications training exercise, and everybody was in a big room, and here's the, you know, the kind of sample response that we have. If you remember the old, I think it used to be the civil defense program, this is kind of maybe the subsequent operation to that. So, it's different from like the emergency alert system, completely different from that, this is a local operation.
Basically, you never want to see this pull into your driveway, Joe. You never want to see this pull into your driveway, because that means something really bad's happened.
No, seriously, so, so in other words, it's for natural disasters?
Could be anything.
Chemical?
Yeah, train derailment, yeah, I mean, those are the things that are on people's minds now. Yep, absolutely, those things would all be in the... Any widespread, you know, operation, recovery, rescue, whatever it might be, they'd be...
So, then, just who will be in charge? Catastrophic charge?
And that would depend on the planning that's done, and so, this is one or the other, it brings up kind of an interesting point that we talked about in our committee meetings. You know, we've got the, kind of the strategy, the overall oversight and strategy of the EMA comes from this executive committee, you know, they're responsible for that. But then the actual tactics, and what they would do in the event of this emergency or that emergency, that's up to the specific, you know, operational entities, and so depending on the circumstance and what happens, they would, you know, they would follow whatever plans they have in place for, you know, response, so that's how it works. And Marty, you might have something to add to that, too?
That's pretty much nails.
What's different between what you're trying to set up versus FEMA? It's a national disaster, you said, so it's national, it's not like...
Well, no, this would be, I don't want to overstate the comparison, but this would kind of be like what FEMA would do if it was just located, isolated in Medina County.
So, this is a localized FEMA?
Right. Again, that's probably a slight oversimplification, but yeah, I think that, because the EMA, FEMA, it's federal EMA, and this is our countywide EMA, so there's plenty of overlap there, it's just, and we do still benefit by going together as a county with federal funding and grants, and those things can all come into play. I think we probably, I think everybody would acknowledge this, we're probably more competitive on that front, when we present a united front, say, hey, this is for a countywide entity, as opposed to Brunswick wants this, or Medina wants this, or Wadsworth wants that. So, knowing that it's going to be part of an organization that exists to benefit the whole community helps when you're applying for those grants.
Anybody else have a question?
Thanks, Commissioner, for showing up.
Sure, happy to be here, appreciate the opportunity.
Next item on new business is, our OTARMA is coming up for renewal, I think we've got all the paperwork ready, we just need to sign a proxy agreement, and then I would recommend, when we send that in for quotes, that we get quotes on $1,000 deductible, $2,500 deductible, and then we can go and figure out what rates we want. That's why I asked the captain about how much that apparatus was, that they bought that positive pressure, so we can add that onto the list, because we want our list to be accurate. Anyway, so, moving on, the BWC yearly memberships for the safety councils, those memberships are due July 1st, so we can continue going to Medina's, it's pretty convenient, they have luncheons once a month. If you go to 10 luncheons or more, then you get a rebate on your workers' comp.
10 meetings or more, where they serve lunch?
What'd I say, 10 months?
10 meetings where they serve lunch?
10 meetings where, yeah, they serve lunch. Well, we pay for it. All right, so, they do it 12 months, you got to go at least 10 times, and we pay for lunch, and then you get a rebate on your BWC, and they raised it to 3%, which makes it very well worth it, very, very well worth it. So, Marty, if you could have Sherri just make sure that we get that handled?
Absolutely.
She gets, she can get a copy of the calendar and share with everybody, so we know who's going. They have different speakers, so we probably want to send different people depending on the speaker. Okay, good. Shredding event, I think that's Marty.
Yeah, there was a question a couple, maybe a couple meetings ago about a shredding event. We are going to have a shredding event, it'll be Saturday, September 23rd.
September 3rd?
23rd.
23rd.
23rd. It'll run from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon. It'll run from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon. They're going to, they're going to be setting up in the admin building parking lot area. It'd be just like the ones we used to do down at the, down at the recycle center, same kind of thing. You'll come in, actually, this one is actually a little bit better. When you pull in, you don't have to get out of your car. If you've got stuff in the trunk, you pop your trunk, they'll unload it and dump it out. You don't have to do anything. So if you've got a whole bunch of stuff to pull out, you're all set. The charge is, it's actually extremely reasonable. It's less than I can remember we did before. I might be thinking wrong, but it's $125 an hour. So for $375, we get a three-hour run, which is pretty cheap. They're going to have a couple people there, they'll set up cones, direct the people in and out. It's, it should run really well. Should run really well. And this is what we had, you guys gave me authority to pursue last meeting, or two meetings ago. So you're all set. Squeaky wheel gets the grease.
Any new business that didn't get on there? Chris? Marty?
No.
All right. Old business, colibarium update.
All right, we are making great progress with this. I'm sorry Rick isn't here. He's been doing a lot of work out there, where he's doing a really nice job. We've got the, all the concrete poured, they've got the area all dug around. I believe he said on Wednesday, they're going to be setting the actual colibarium. Then we're going to go out, he'll have benches there, so people can go out and kind of sit. We're not going to do any planting, obviously, until we get a little bit better weather, because we don't want plantings to have it die right away. So, but it's a nice area out of Walts. If you're familiar with Walts area, when you first pull in, you continue down, it's on the left-hand side, it's kind of in an open area down there. It's raised a little bit, there's a ramp, so if you're in, it's a little bit of a steep ramp, but if you're, you know, have trouble kind of going up steps, you can work your way up the ramp, so it's okay to get up to that. It's set up big enough that we're going to have a bench and one colibarium, and there's room to put a second one in later if we decide to put another one in. So we won't have to repour anything, all that upfront work will be done. Now, with that, we have a resolution I'd like to introduce, 142023, and this will be in addition to the cemetery rules to add the colibarium fees. Went through what a bunch of townships in the area are doing and tried to pick out something that looked like it'd work out okay. And basically, I'm just going to hit the costs. The cost per niche is going to be $450. And basically, what that works out to is, at $450, once we sell all of them, it'll pay for the, for the colibarium itself. So it's not like the township's making any money on it, just it's kind of a break-even phase. It's a few bucks more ground at all, but it's really not much different. Opening-close fees, weekdays is $100, weekends $200, and if anybody wants to or needs to do it on a federal holiday, it'll be $300. Engravings. I really struggled on this one. Some of the townships say you're responsible for your own engraving, others say we're going to do it, and here's a flat fee. Well, the fees jump all over the place. So what I would propose is that for engravings, we would say something to the effect that the township would take care of getting the engraving done, and the resident who wanted it done would be billed at the cost of the township. The reason I would prefer doing it that way rather than have each individual do it is I want to make sure that they all look the same, the same style, the same cut, the same engraving. Everything looks the same and has a look of conformity, as opposed to being a whole bunch of different things. Now, Bill, in a resolution, can I do that, or do I have to have an amount specified?
I think you can do it.
Okay.
Because otherwise, you'd have to be changing the rule regularly.
Right.
Based upon what the current costs are, so.
So that's, we have that resolution, then it was part of that resolution, we included the, another copy of the cemetery rules, and that, all that same wording was added into cemetery rules as well. Any thoughts, any comments?
Not for me. I think it makes sense. Sorry? So what am I writing for engravings?
Well, I'm going, I'll correct that when we put it back. I'm just going to put down, and I'll get with Bill to get some good wording, but something to the effect of engravings will be at the expense of the owner. Township will take care of it. It'll be billed at cost.
Just billed at cost?
Yep.
I'm good.
All right, I'd make a motion that we accept resolution 142023.
I'll second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Yeah, I think Rick did say it was going to be set Wednesday.
Yeah.
That's good.
And he's, he still has money left in the budget for like the landscaping and such. He's looking for benches. He's trying to find, which I think we'd really need if he could get one, is it'd look very classic, it's like a marble bench. You don't have to worry about weathering or anything like that, and just, it would look nice. But he's still, he's still trying to find.
I agree. Yeah, that would be awesome. Be awesome. Okay. Any other old business? Not for me.
Marty?
Not from here. All right. Public participation. Anybody? Public participation.
I have, I just have a question. Is there?
Name first, please.
Oh, Kathy Byrne? Do we know what it costs the township to clean up that property on Polk Road?
We do not have those totals yet.
You don't have those totals yet? Okay. Just wondering.
I hope to next, by next meeting.
Okay.
Will you want to donate something towards it?
I don't know. I do appreciate that, yeah. I do appreciate that, though.
Will? You've got a lot to say. Your first time here, so stand at the podium.
I'll take it.
We've got, everyone's got Bill to hear you. It's good. We're all neighbors.
This could be on.
It could be.
My name's William Stewart. I live around Ballast Road. Can you hear me? I think you're about 33 years. And I pretty much am surrounded by farmland, which I kind of like, have nice little surrender. I've lived through pig poo, cow poo being spread. My neighbor who lives a quarter mile up on Westfield would always, you know, I'd ask him, why you got to spread that when the winds blow in my direction? He said, you don't want me to smell it, right? That's part of living out in the country, right? And I always chuckle my, last few years, and especially last year, use of, it's called biosalts. I don't know if you guys know what that is. It's the most pollutant-rich man-made substance on the planet Earth. It's got 80,000 known toxins, hazardous waste toxins. Comes from waste treatment plants. When you think it's the sewage plants, it's just feces, right? Most of us think, anything that goes down sewer, industrial sewers, hospital sewers, anything you can think of that's in sewer, is what's in sewage sludge, okay? It used to be the treatment plants would incinerate it. For years, they would incinerate it. The government, the EPA banned that practice because of the Clean Air Act. One of the strongest hazardous toxins that is dioxin. I'm not sure if you know what dioxin is. It's one of the most cancerous chemicals on the planet Earth. That comes from, that's one of the harmful hazardous chemicals in it. Then they started putting it into the lake and in the ocean. Clean Water Act stopped that. So the landfill, the waste treatment plants can't get rid of that without having to pay hazardous waste fees. So they got a way around it, and where we're at today now, that they can sell it in two forms, class A, class B. Class A to the public, which I'm sure you guys may have known, it's like fertilizer, but norganite. Norganite is sewage sludge that has been treated, taking most of the harmful chemicals out, enough that they feel EPA, the public, and then I could go to the garden center and put it on our lawns. Makes it really nice and green, it's a lot of iron in it. Sewage sludge is loaded with nitrogen phosphorus, okay? So it's a great fertilizer for farmers. It's dirt-cheap for them to buy. Fertilizer is super expensive right now, okay? So it's dirt-cheap for them to buy. The problem is, they're putting it on the fields, and you and I, I don't know if you've ever smelled it, if you've been around the farm where it's been put on, it will make your eyes absolutely burn. It'll make your throat itch. One of the rules is that it has to be dug in within 24 hours of being put on. So last year, just to make a long story short, it was put on fields around me. I know one of the individuals from the farmer that put it on, I won't use names for either one of them. And I called him, he's a good friend, and I told him, I said, hey, they're putting this stuff on. I said, it is burning my eyes. I'm on my tummy stand, I can't even sit up there, it's so bad. And he goes, they're supposed to dig that in? I said, it's been out here for two weeks. Two weeks, okay? It's supposed to be either immediately dug in or within 24 hours, okay? And there's all kinds of rules. Grain, expected grain, percentage of how much of, per acre. It's supposed to be tested on the soil to see if it's even needed, on and on and on. I could go into a long story, okay? Anyway, two more weeks come. It's been a month now that it's been spread on the field, and it's just reeking, and it doesn't go away. I mean, the smell does not go away. Even when it's dug in, it takes several weeks before it really dissipates. I finally threatened, I basically said, I'm going to the, to the news, it's the only thing. I called all three trustees. Ty came out, Chris came out, both on separate occasions, so it wasn't classified, the meeting I was told. They experienced the smell. They also experienced that within two hours of me calling, that farmer had three of the biggest case tractors you've ever seen with, I don't know if you know, the bottom plow is. They never bottom plow fields anymore. It's all no-til. I mean, you don't see plows digging and really, I mean, so much that you could hear those diesel tractors just bogging down, really digging it deep to cover it, and just, you know, floor it. It was bad last year, I mean, really bad, to the point where my dog was hacking, I was hacking, and just the burn of the eyes in it. My issue is, Chris had given me, had talked to someone from the EPA. I went to every person I could go to. I even went to Nate, park director, and said, hey, if you want to know where the algae bloom is coming from, it's right, right here. I live right next to the, one of the main tributaries that goes into the inlet that feeds into Chippewa Lake, okay? You could see the green on top of the water in the creeks before it even gets to the thing. So you got all the phosphates, all the nitrogen, and you got all the toxic chemicals. So we're going to Chippewa Lake, guess what, people? You're swimming in there, you're fishing, or whatever, or anything, it's in there. All that pollutant is in there, okay? And anyway.
No response from the parks is what you're saying, Will?
No, I was pretty upset. I asked Nate, in fact, when you were there, I think I had told you, Ty, that I asked Nate to please, I said, Nate, you're only a half a mile. I live a half a mile from Buckeye Woods. Come over here and witness this. Come over and look at these creeks. I mean, if you want to know where that algae bloom is coming from, it's coming from right here. And if you live anywhere within a mile, two miles of that, this biosalts being spread in the fields, you will experience the same thing I did, I guarantee it. It is putrid, and it hurts. And anyway, Chris had given me this, this report that he gave to the EPA. I read it over, it's very, very short, and says the 24-hour thing on there. The problem I have, I have a complaint, it was definitely a violation of the EPA rules and guidelines, and one of those are big, bold letters, 24-hour digging, okay? Nothing was done. Nothing was, I was never contacted. I mean, so my question to each one of you, as a township resident, as all of our residents, okay, how are we being protected to know what is being put on the field that we're smelling? We're going to Chippewa Lake, I mean, that we're, you know, animals are eating that same food that's coming from there, and nobody knows exactly what's in that, but they do. I mean, what protection do we have as a resident? I mean, there are other, if you go online, there's an article in The Guardian, which is an independent newspaper, it's very good, it's from a scientist from the EPA that wrote and brought this subject up. And I sent it to Marty. Remember, we sent you the link. I asked you to pass it on to Ty and Chris, please, which you didn't.
I probably, if you sent it to me, I did, I, I don't, but you probably did.
It's really, really, really good article on it. It tells you exactly what chemicals and toxins and, you know, as well as the feces, the feces, the feces part is the least of the stuff that's in there. I guess, it just shocks me that nobody in, that I've talked to, really make that a concern.
Let me just interject, Will. I was glad to hear that you were coming tonight, because Commissioner Harrison was going to be here, and he can kind of help us on the county level. Do you have any two cents, three cents worth of information? Is there something new to you? I mean.
It's, it's less new to me, because I've been traveling up into Lorain County with the signs.
That's where I went from. And they've got the, yeah, they've got the signs about the plants and everything.
Oh, for grafting area, yeah.
Yeah. So it's become more familiar to me, because I wasn't aware of any agriculture use here locally.
In Ohio, it's one of the few states that permits it.
Yeah.
And our township is one of the ones on the bucket list that permits it. Yeah, I'm just.
Now, Chatham uses a lot of it as well.
Yeah.
But when I was looking back in his backyard, clear as day, you follow the riverbank, it is the greenest green you've ever seen. I mean.
Yeah. Well, you put something on top of the ground, and your one weather event away from it ended up in the nearest.
Yeah, I just, there's no penalty, though. No penalty to the farmer, no investigation, I mean, according to this, Chris. And that, that to me is really, really troublesome, because there are strict guidelines on there. And if we're going to permit it in the township, then who is policing it? Who is verifying that it's being used in the right way? I mean, I've gone, been bounced from township trustees to the EPA, to the Water Commission, to the, whatever's over on, off of 162. I went in that office, they told me they don't handle it. It's just been, I've been on like a ping pong ball. And that's, that's what's making it so easy for farmers to use it. It's cheap, and there's really not a checks and balances on it. And it's dangerous. It's dangerous stuff. I urge you guys to really just do a little research on, you know, what's in biosalts, you know, and you'll see. It's.
Can we, I mean, something, maybe you can talk to sanitation, I mean, can we get reports? I mean, it should maybe be public knowledge, you know what I mean?
I don't know what, once.
I hate to put you on the spot.
No, I know, no problem. I'm here. Are you talking soil and water? Was that the office on 162?
Went to soil, water.
Yeah.
County called me, gave myself Chris down the hoes of them, but I didn't.
Yeah. Because as I think about the county setup, there really isn't, you know, and I hate, I know this is going to, there isn't really, from a jurisdictional type question, we don't really oversee the, you know, fertilizers and those kinds of things that go on the ground. I guess also, the other concern is, you know, you've got a lot of people probably doing things the right ways, but a couple people do it the wrong way, and unfortunately happens from that close to home, and it really.
Well, there's, like I said, if you do some research, there's other, many, many cities that banned it. They, you know, no matter what the EPA says, they banned it.
Well, cities would have that latitude, the townships don't, and counties can only do, we only have the jurisdiction we're given by statute, and it's a bad answer, but it's.
But if they don't know, how can they do anything? I mean, that's why I'm bringing it up to you. If it isn't made aware, it starts with speaking about it.
Right.
Investigate, find out what's in it. You know, and you find out, it affects all of us, one way or another. Eventually, it's going to come to affect you. I mean, I don't know if you go to Chippewa Lake, then?
Yeah.
It's in there.
Yep.
It's all in there, people. So next time you're going in there, you touch the water, you're doing that, all that stuff is in there.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, I just, I think that the county, if there would be state action that would authorize counties to do something about it, then both the county and the township probably have a lot more legislative options. You know, and if the EPA is not doing the work it's supposed to do, that's probably the initial and primary failing here.
Okay, but if a resident myself contacts my trustee, who contacts EPA, and they don't take action, what happens then? That's where we're at.
That is, right, and.
Yeah, makes you unit.
Yeah.
And that's, and see, that's the, that's what I've been getting for you.
Yeah.
Yes.
The EPA doesn't, their jurisdiction doesn't extend to the county when they neglect their responsibility. I mean, it doesn't, that doesn't mean that we've got the ability to do anything about it, it's a bad answer.
So, let me ask you, if it was in your backyard, what would you do?
Yeah, I'd be, I'd.
No, really, what would you do?
I'd probably be doing the same thing you're doing, just pounding on any table I could get my hands on to get somebody to take some action on it. I would be.
So you have any suggestions?
To talk after the meeting, yeah.
Thanks, Will. All right, anybody else, public participation?
I just have response to this gentleman here. I know, I know it's a pain where you're at right now.
Name for the record.
State, the mountains, Lake River. I know it's a pain in the butt where you are now dealing with this, but maybe what you need to start doing is start climbing the political ladder in the state of Ohio and start contacting the media. You have got to make yourself such a pain in the butt to these people that they're going to start listening and do something. This is no different than that train wreck that just happened. The train spilled toxins, went into the waterway, and EPA showed up right away and started putting all these controls there. That's what's got to happen.
I, well, I, I did mention to each one of the township trustees, I met with them personally. I didn't want to go to the meeting and blow up. I tried to bite my tongue even when I was up there because I'm allowed up to here. But that was my, that was my next step, you know what I mean? And I hate to do it because I don't want to quit, you know, drive trustees or anybody else that's tried to help under the bus. I mean, if you've ever been around this stuff, it is the most.
Yeah, when I went out there, it, it had a very distinct, I mean, it wasn't like cow or pig. I mean, it was really odd and sharp and, yeah, it was not good.
It's been spreading for about six years in my county township.
Six or seven years.
And that's when, you know, the, the thing, the algae bloom, it's about the same course of problems.
It gets so bad they have to shut the lake down, close it down.
Yeah.
If we can't stop it at the township level, can we require additional testing of the material they're putting down?
No, I doubt it if it's written the same way as most of the EPA regulations. It's their jurisdiction, they approve what the mix are on, all that stuff. If it's, you've got a wide enough problem, maybe petitions to your congressman, legislators and all the way up, governor, just start, more people that are complaining.
Well, I guess my first, my question really was, we want to get results from the plant that's up there in Liverpool. What's in it? Tell me what your daily test, and then we got the data, something, you know what I mean?
No one likes to share.
It's not just affecting, I mean, it's affecting you right away, but it's affecting all of us. But it's in the water, it's in the air, and people are swimming and.
This is class, the Class B too. Class A, one order night, one I told you about that needs to be sold to the public, is the one they treat the colds and all the toxins. Class B, it's wide open. Whatever comes out of that after the purified water goes into the sewage thing that goes out of the tree.
What does that do to the food that's grown in that soil and the fish in?
Fish in Chippewa Lake, the cattle that eat the corn, cattle that eat soybeans, it's all in there. In the soil.
That's horrible.
If you can answer your question, if the plant actually has a record of that, then it would be a public record and you could get it. I don't know whether they keep records of it.
I was told that you can somehow get lab results. I don't know how often they have to test it or process for that.
But if the lab, not to defend anybody, but if the lab results meet what EPA says it should be, even if it's all the worst stuff in the world, we still would have it like to stand up. It would only be if they don't meet what EPA says it should be.
Right.
You've got to wonder if the EPA or the Clean Water Act, Clean Air Act banned it. Being burned, banned it from being dumped to the oceans because it was harmful, it was toxic. But it's okay to spread on the field.
My, my guess would be, it went out on stages. First they decided, well, you can't burn it, we've got to get rid of it some other way. Well, we can't do that either. Did something else for you, we can't do that either. So I think what Bill said is probably right. We just try to make a bigger noise and you're, you're not the only person who has that same issue when it gets spread.
How can we collectively make a bigger noise though?
I don't know right now. I think that's something we need to discuss and figure out how we can do that.
I guess I have a question for.
One thing you may want to do, you may want to do is, I mean, that's why I'm glad you came here. Head down to the next county commissioners meeting and just kind of stake the same case. The more places it is, and I know it's an extra thing for you to have to do, but that's another set of government officials to be in front of. With that.
You're going to have to tell the story a lot of times, unfortunately, I wish I weren't like that, but you're going to have to tell the story a lot.
But I'm guessing with each of those ways they changed how they disposed of it, people were going through the exact same thing.
In the news.
Yeah.
Chris, you gave Will a report from the Ohio.
I gave correspondence.
The 24-hour rule, what was, they have to, every time they spread it, they have to till within 24? I mean, that's the Ohio.
That's what it's supposed to be.
There's the EPA rule that 24 hours has to be dug in, it also has to have so many days without rain or soil moisture level. There's strict restrictions on it. None of those were met, and I could go into what I did and checked, but it rained two days after that I had you come out. It would have never been dug in if I didn't threaten media. It's like, when you came out is when the traction.
I, no, yeah, they were out there.
I waited a month for this and I finally, I was briefed out of that month.
Anybody else?
Might not maybe contact, is it Kent State or Akron that's connecting up there?
Ohio State.
Akron.
Akron. How about connecting Akron, ask them, have one of their environmental studies classes come down there and do a water testing? That way you've got some, you've got some tangible evidence.
Which, which one is it that said that?
One of their environmental studies groups will come down and they can do an actual water testing on, on, on the stream, on Chippewa, and see what kind of results they come back with, that could straighten your argument then.
Well, that's why I was hoping, you know, contacting Nate, Park Director, he would be more, I thought he would be really tickled that, you know, I found a source and he'd come down there and test that. And I was just shocked, I mean.
Do you want to try to reach out to Nate and see if he can do anything, or you want me to?
Oh, you asking him?
I'm asking you.
Oh, you can.
All right. Let me, let me give, I know Nate from, so we're with our dog teams, let me, let me give him a call and see if there's anything we can do. See, and again, right, wrong, or different, if the complaint comes from a government agency, it's probably going to have a lot more stick to it than it comes from people.
That's when I, I think I talked to Chris, was it Chris or Ty, that we were talking about it, and that was one of the things that we had last year in November. And I believe that we, I think, one of the two of you suggested to me, and that's what I did.
Chris, the contacts you have at EPA, let me say that one more time, contacts you have at EPA, is there anybody you could call there to say, if this is the rule and if it's not being complied with, how do you, or how do we report you if you can enforce it?
I wrote down his name, his name's Miffel Wright, he's at the Tunsford branch, it's the Northeast Ohio branch. He's in charge of biosolids, but I'll go ahead and contact him.
So if we have a solution, okay, good, good. Yes, Joe?
Um, Joe Fraser. This calls to mind an incident or a situation, exactly what's happening in our backyard that occurred in Lorain County. This was last year. They were to have a designated plot that they were going to dispose of all this fluid.
Landfill, yeah.
And there was a big issue in the papers, it was in the Gazette. There was an article in the Gazette, I can recall. I don't recall the outcome or whether it was implemented, but it had something to do with an organization, and there was a grassroots organization that was against it.
Sierra.
It was, if my memory serves me correct, it was near, off of Route 83 in, probably close to a prison. I don't know, does anybody remember the situation?
All right, anybody else, public participation? Chase?
Uh, Chase Burmeister, just a quick follow-up on correspondence and public participation I had last week. I think with all the negativity at the meeting in May, some things got cloudy, but I had an email for the public records request that was allegedly answered, and that was cool, but there was the main component to that, which was zoning providing me with the four options presented to the landowner at 6280 Lafayette Road, in which he would be able to utilize that land as local commercial land without meeting the requirements of the local commercial land. So, that was the main, and then we got into the email thing, and then that question was never talked about or brought back up. So, I think that was my main goal in that topic, and that's the email I never received. So even though I got the email that said there was no correspondence, the second part of that whole package wasn't delivered. Does that make sense?
So your question is, what, what options does the landowner have?
Yeah, Alice had presented to me, two months ago now, that she had presented him with four options. Correct, Alice?
No, we talked about a lot of different things.
Okay.
Nothing was permanent or formal, it was just a discussion. Do you want pizza with pepperoni, or do you want pepperoni and sausage, or do you want pepper and sausage?
I'll just retract.
And mushrooms.
Thanks, guys, thanks. I'm good.
All right, anybody else?
Sixty-something days. I made copies for everybody, but I figured I should probably start with you. Uh, Justin Fulley. As I'm sure everybody's aware, we've been without a full-time, permanent fire chief since, effectively since December, when former chief Jerry Winkler took a leave of absence and then accepted a severance in January. Publicly, we've heard that there was a posting for the position, I believe February or March, the posting went up, soliciting applications, and then maybe the April meeting, I think Mr. Fullerton had discussed having received numerous applications and that interviews would have to be done, but nothing was officially announced until May 17th, when the public was informed of a special meeting that would be held on May 18th to interview candidates. That would be the last meeting prior to today's. But amazingly, on Friday, May 26th, Captain Svetzky, who's been acting as the assistant chief, sent an email to the entire fire department, well, looks like the majority of the fire department, and to trustee Chris O'Neil, and I'd like to read that now. It states, "Good afternoon all. The Fire Chief Selection Committee, made up of the Board of Trustees, several local fire chiefs, and representation from Chippewa Lake Council, conducted interviews for the position last Thursday, May 18th. The committee members were asked to select their top three candidates that they felt would best serve as our next leader. After assembling the data and determining the top three candidates, each of the top three candidates was afforded an interview with the committee. After conclusion of the interviews and much discussion, the committee unanimously made the recommendation that the board pursue employment negotiations with Brian Kavanaugh. Many of you know Chief Kavanaugh from our neighbors to the south, as he currently serves as the chief at Westfield Fire and Rescue District. Chief Kavanaugh is a certified paramedic, firefighter, fire safety inspector, and fire EMS instructor. He has over 23 years in the fire service, both at Westfield as well as the city of Medina and the Medina Life Support Team. He joined the United States Navy as a corpsman after graduation from Medina High School in 1994, and retired as a chief from the Navy in 2019, after serving numerous tours in Central America, Thailand, Okinawa, Germany, and two combat tours in Iraq. He currently resides in our township with his wife, Catherine, and I apologize if I mispronounce that, and daughters Maggie, Maya, and Kennedy. Pending employment negotiations, Chief Kavanaugh's tentative start date is June 26th. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to reach out to Chief Goldsman or myself. If no decision was made publicly to hire Chief Kavanaugh as our next chief, I'm perplexed at how an email like this would get circulated. It raises many questions that I think the residents of the township have a right to have answers to. First and foremost, when was the selection committee formed? Under whose authority did the selection committee operate? As a publicly formed, or as an officially formed committee, why weren't their meetings publicly notified and people aware of them? If this email is accurate, and there was a committee formed that included the people that are listed here, why was Gloria Glenns excluded? They're a member of the fire district as well. I mean, again, lots of questions as to the procedures and policies of how this board operates, and this just highlights one of those. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay, anybody else?
Little quick question, the voting, voting? No, they got along the way. Is there a reason we still use the old service garage, that service area that was supposed to be falling down, and we don't use this nice place to vote now? Why can't we? Sure would be more pleasant.
You got an opinion?
Spend a lot of tax money to put it up.
You're right.
Sure would be nice to utilize that purpose.
I don't have a strong answer for that. I don't know the exact reason why. I know part of the issue would be access in and out. I mean, if you have, if you have, you've had their election date, well, this past presidential election, as crazy as it was, if you've got that kind of traffic, you don't have nearly the parking here that you have down there. If you've got people that start backing up a parking in the entryway, and we get a squad call, that could be, that could be dangerous. I think the biggest reason, that's just my own opinion, I may be completely wrong, but I think the biggest reason is just accessibility. There's no doubt this is a much nicer building, it's a much nicer area, but the actual ability to house vehicles there. I know the last time I voted down there, the last, when I had last time, the last presidential election, that lot was filled, and there were people lined up, you know, 35, 40 people deep, just trying to get in. You wouldn't have physically the room up here to do that much. I think that's the big.
You've got two empty bays out there.
So you're going to park cars in the empty bays?
No, we put the poles there.
No, I'm not talking about the poles. I mean, let's, let's assume you could fit all the poles in here, where's all the people going to park?
Plenty of grass out there. Ty just about had a stroke.
I think a lot of it comes down just to accessibility. That's my own opinion. I may be wrong, but that's my own opinion. And that question has been asked before.
Has it?
Yeah.
All right, I'd like to move that we break into executive session pursuant to ORC 121.22G1, hiring, firing, compensation, and also 121.22G2, possible sale of property. Do I get a second?
I'll second the motion.
Roll call.
O'Neil, yes.
Forkel, yes.
Fullerton, yes. Also attending would be Law Director Thorn, Fiscal Officer Rubensaw, Captain Svetzky, and Brian Kavanaugh. The time is 8:09.
The section two is on the sale of property, deals with sale like competitive bidding, where it could give a competitive advantage if information was leaked. I'm not sure where we're going with that, but it's not just for sale per se of property. So it's got to be discussed somewhere, there could be some kind of advantage given to somebody if the information was let out prematurely.
No, I agree. No, I agree.
I mean, if that's the purpose, fine, that's what I mean, you can't just go in for just the sale per se of property.
Oh, no, no, yeah, no, no, we're not going to.
Okay.
Talk about dollar amounts.
No, so you're saying this section here that...
Yeah. That's two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Property for public purpose, the sale of property at competitive bid, where it could give a competitive advantage. Okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah, no, that's right, Bill. Okay, the time changed, it's 8:10.
Okay, back out of executive session. The time is 9:47 PM. No decisions were made.
Yeah, there was.
Huh?
There was a decision made.
No decisions were made back there.
Right, right, okay.
Right?
Right.
Is there any trustees that want to comment?
Yes. Based on our discussions, I would like to motion to offer the position of fire chief to Brian Kavanaugh, based upon finalization of an agreeable contract.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor, aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, same sign, okay.
I'd also like to motion for you guys to allow me to continue negotiations with Mr. Kavanaugh and Bill Thorne.
For purposes of finalizing the contract?
Yes.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, okay. Anything else?
Nothing, me.
Margin for me.
All right. I'd moved to adjourn and pay the warrants of the township.
Second the motion?
All those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Meeting adjourned at 9:49.
You stuck around with the whole thing. I'm impressed.
Well, I knew it was coming.
Well, you had a nice long one at the EMA meeting, too.
Yeah, I gave up. What was the one we guys stand for?